All the tables, man.
Rooms up nice.
Yeah.
We'd like to be here. I'm going, we're going to Mohegan on Saturday. We on?
Huh? We are? Uh, let's wait one more minute. Um, open a January seventh planning board meeting will come to order at seven o'clock.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Invoices. Um, do we have a motion to approve the invoices? I will read them. Ramway for four hundred dollars. One oh eight rear Santa Street for three hundred dollars. Nelson Street for one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Um, two forty-five Santa Street for one thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents. Three oh one Main Street for four thousand three hundred and ten dollars. Atwood for one thousand ninety-one dollars and sixty cents. And Benjamin, I'm thirty-eight Benjamin, I'm sorry, for one thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There was another one for nine seventy-one.
That's the Atwood I combined them into.
You did?
Actually, we combined them into one figure.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, so, um, open a pub, open the public hearing for three oh one Main Street. Do I have a motion?
So motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Yep.
Uh, good evening Chairman, members of the board. My name's Mike Maroni, live in Havel. Uh, I'd like to give an overview of where we are in the project. Uh, we're looking for plan approval and parking waivers. I believe we've provided the best, best case scenario for the, uh, for the use of the site. Uh, by having our employees means no traffic entering and exiting for about approximately eight hours. Um, we'd, we'd be using shared public parking for our patrons, uh, just like the Groveland Diner has used for, for years with fifty-five seats and no employees or, or customer parking. And the sandwich shop has twenty-five seats with no customer parking or employee parking. And they have used the shared parking successfully. And what is nice about our operations is that we really-
Excuse me, I, for interrupting for one second. Can I ask what the gentleman behind you is doing right there? Mister, you.
I want you to talk to the guy here, can I do your thing here?
He's recording it with his phone. I told him that it's being recorded, um, through the cameras on the wall.
Okay, no, I didn't, I didn't realize that and, I mean, he's, so, okay.
Um, so, uh, what's nice about the operation is that we really will not be overlapping, uh, our other businesses in the area. Uh, with our, with your approval, we will improve the entrance to the post office by widening the paved course nor the entrance to match that of the curb cut to allow for two lanes of traffic. Uh, when Mister Cornell placed a temporary blockade at the Norwood Insurance driveway, it showed that even without the improved widening of Prince Way, having single lane entrance and exit, the post office functioned regardless. Uh, also there was zero parking lines or signage for the post office as it is now, uh, patrons, for patrons or employees. Uh, but again, it still functioned during the holiday busy season. As I stated before, we do not want to use Norwood Insurance driveway for anything. We will post a sign at the improved entranceway, uh, labeling it post office entrance. I would all, only recommend to Mister Cornell to place the sign in his entrance that says Norwood Insurance entrance. I would also like to offer to Mister Conwell, Cornell, that we would more than welcome his employees and customers that enter the, uh, park and enter and park on his property to exit through our property so they do not have to do a three-point turn or back out of the driveway or have to deal with any kind of a gate he feels in need to set. So to summarize, uh, you end up with a renovated building with extensive landscaping, making the site a centerpiece for the gateway to Groveland. More real estate tax revenue, improved parking for the post office, and easement from the landlocked waterfront property that the town of Groveland owns to the public sidewalk on Main Street. Uh, the shared parking has a great network of s- safe sidewalks leading to three oh one Main Street with, uh, walk lights from all four directions. Um, any approval would should, would be conditioned on a mass DOT fire department and post office approval for quality restaurant use per the submitted plan. We still have to go to the ZBA for a special permit and conservation board for their approval. And for a few items that, uh, still outstanding with, uh, from Peter from TEC, um, from the most recent peer reviewer, I'd like to have the following comments on a couple of open questions. Number six, uh, basically post office delivery trucks coming and going and having enough room to turn around. I spoke to the, uh, post office employee and he says that there's only one delivery truck at four forty-five every day and comes in for five, ten minutes and, and takes them to the nearest distribution plant. Uh, so that is the only truck that comes in and, and uses the loading dock for ten minutes at the most. Uh, number ten, that's basically the same answer for the, a different question. It's, it's only one delivery, uh, per, per day. It's at the end of the day to pick up everything that comes in for the day that has to be distributed. Um, eleven A, as I previously said, post office approval would be required. The previous facility manager, Chris Madden, who actually lives in Groveland and has retired. And, uh, I did have a sit-down meeting with the powers-to-be and showed them the plan and they were delighted that, that they would, there would be signage and parking lines. The written approval will come out of the Boston office and, uh, and, uh, and as of today at three o'clock, I got a call from the Boston office. And, uh, a woman named Julie Gustino said she's, likes the plan and it looks good to her and, but she will push it along for a quick approval turnaround. Eleven B, um, to address the overlap of parking places being used by the post office patrons and the restaurant employees, uh, during the overlapping nine hours per week. We would have our first shift, uh, employees park at the school, uh, School Street parking lot by the old electric building. So that those things, those parking spaces would stay open for the duration of the time the post office is open. Um, eleven C, trash pickup will be scheduled before the post office, uh, opens. And eleven F, uh, yes, we will need a parking waiver. And eleven G, uh, there's a spot that, uh, Peter has decided that it may be difficult for a large truck or a big van to get in and out. Uh, we would change that parking spot to, to a compact, uh, vehicle only spot. Um, in, in closing, I believe we have addressed TEC's concerns. Um, I'm sure he'll be better off, be able to tell you better if I did. Uh, but my engineer, uh, Bill Bearden, who is still on vacation, was unable to attend today. Um, I'd like to thank the board for their time.
Hi, I'm Peter Allison with TEC, the peer reviewer for the board. I think he, he did a pretty good job summarizing my comments. Um, I do think that they're doing the best that they can with a really tight and small site. You know, the question really is, is to the board is, um, do we think that this is, uh, you know, a safe and a good use at, at this location? Um, the biggest outstanding issues are the loading operations for both the restaurant and the post office, um, which will potentially be occurring while both uses are open, so that could be a problem. Um, especially, um, I know a few of the board members, um, were at the site. Um, one day we went out to do a site visit and we saw how tight the site can be when a postal truck backs up to that loading dock and kind of blocks off the driveway. Um, the second, uh, big issue or big hurdle, I think, for this project is the lack of parking. The latest version is to try and eliminate all the parking from the site, um, similar to what the Groveland Diner did, so. Is there any questions from the board specifically to any of my comments?
When you say limit, no parking at all, so?
Uh, for patrons.
For patrons.
So only employees of the restaurant would be parking at the site. Um, one of, one of the comments that he just addressed tonight is, with the post office open and the employees of the restaurant taking up all these spaces, how would that work? Post office, you know, not gonna be able to park in there. Um, and I think their proposal would be for the first shift employees to park off-site, um, leaving those spaces for the post office until the post office is closed after five, so.
Um, I, I see the, the mass DOT letter from, uh, May twenty-three, twenty nineteen. The interesting comment in there, that when they designed the bridge, they had no intentions of either of those buildings to be operational. And so they, that's why they closed everything off. And when the post office remained, which appears to be a surprise, they had the one, one area, but then from the, the old gas station, they never intended that to ever be utilized again for anything. And that's why they, as you know, when we did the sidewalk, they, they brought the, um, that whole rail system down of concrete and didn't supply any of the light to get in. It's interesting to see what they come up with based upon, on this.
Yeah, and obviously, um, you know, in the decision, if, if the board did move to approve it, you'd have that assurance that it would have to be approved by DOT.
Yeah, it's gotta-
At the end of the day.
They've gotta do something, but it doesn't sound like that, they would, based upon how they originally designed the bridge, and I was on the bridge committee when we actually did that.
Right.
And that was, you know, a long time ago, but one of the things was the bridge was going to actually shift over to School Street. It wasn't gonna be where it is. It was actually gonna go that way and that whole area was gonna be a complete downtown walking area. Um, and a boat, where the garage is would have been a, the new boat ramp going down for anyone coming up. The Merrimack would be a downtown walking area, but that, um, that plan was put back to the state after they had already ordered the steel for the bridge, so it became moot. On the restaurant itself, what kind of restaurant is that?
It's a small lot, so.
Like family style, American food, traditional.
And is the structure of the garage, it's gonna change at all?
Uh, no.
Inside?
Yeah. I know it's probably about two hundred five.
Isn't that, so no parking there, just employees, and then it's just gonna do what the diner did? Thank you.
Any public or butter, any vomit from anybody else?
Yes.
I'm Brian Cornell, I'm representing the butter, uh, two ninety-three Main Street. Thanks for your time. Um, I did wanna just, uh, read a note from Greg Stark. Uh, Greg is another butter across the intersection, Stark and Cronk, I think everyone's familiar with it. He was unable to attend, but, um, I just wanted to get some color from the last meeting where I was told by Mister Maroni that the, uh, Groveland Diner never had a problem with parking and that, you know, every, everything was fine. Everyone could come and go as they please. He did, uh, provide a little bit of color to that and obviously, um, I'll address that in a second. To the planning board, I believe I have addressed the board before about my concerns about the Groveland Square parking in the past. There is a real concern that parking and pedestrian flow will be problematic at the gas station location. My experience with the Groveland Diner historically had partial parking issues as well. They had been making parking deals with the tentative three-ten Main Street for their parking on the weekends. Unfortunately, those deals are no longer possible. Currently, there are no available spaces anywhere around my building at three oh six to three oh eight Main Street. I truly hope the board has an accurate grasp on the parking impact, pedestrian flow, and traffic anomalies. Sorry, I could not attend. So with that, uh, you know, 'cause it was told to me last meeting that the Groveland Diner really had no problem with parking, so, I mean, that, I just wanted to address that through, you know, the prior landlord of the Groveland Diner. I, I also just wanted to point out then, when the Groveland Diner was in existence, where the bridge was in a different location, it was a completely different square. Uh, in front of our building, both two ninety-one and two ninety-three Main Street, there was street parking. In front of the post office, there was street parking for people running in and out. There was no curb for the post office all the way to the other side of the Getty Station. That, that spanned, I think, about eighty, a hundred feet of just open curb. Um, so I think from a standpoint of parking and operationally for, for a restaurant, it was totally different circumstances then. Uh, as you know, the Groveland Diner's been closed for a couple of years. They didn't really do too well after the bridge reconstruction. Um, I also did wanna point out that we are talking a little bit of apples and oranges, although they're both fruits. Uh, the Groveland Diner's are, you know, a, was kind of a family breakfast lunch type place, you know, with some weekend service. Uh, we're talking about an evening place which serves alcohol as a tavern, kind of a different clientele, without those same parking on the street that Groveland Diner had before. And without that parking deal that Groveland Diner had before, it will be an additional challenge for the applicant. I do appreciate your comments as well, Mister Maroni, about offering us the ability to, to use your ingress and egress, but I don't feel that's necessary. Um, as you pointed out, I did close our driveway, uh, pretty much immediately following this. Actually, there was a request at the time from Mister Maroni who said, "You should close that off." "I would close that off. You should make sure that you close that off." I actually did put a sign on the, you know, left side of the driveway, which, which I tried to steer people toward the ingress egress, which is the only access to the post office. And I had a sign kind of saw, sawhorse pointing toward Norwood only. Um, in fact, I had a, a concerned citizen who popped in who was using the post office 'cause my car was parked toward the end of it. And she came in and said, "Hey, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, the, the aisle way between your car and the sign is pretty close. I'd hate to have someone hit your car." And I explained the situation to this person. He said, "Oh geez, wow, I didn't know any of that," you know, just about kind of the fact that this is our driveway and so forth. And she went on to say, "Well, if I were you, I would have just closed the whole driveway." And it was funny to see that about, it was about a, probably the next day I did close it. And it was a few days after that, I saw that same person posting on Facebook, uh, some not-so-nice things, something about the Grinch and, you know, "How dare he close the driveway." The same person, by the way, told me, "You should close the driveway," which I did. Um, yeah, as Mister Maroni suggested. So during that time, I would counter that, that did not work very smoothly, that ingress egress at all. Many of the Facebook posts that have since been taken down were concerned about safety, concerned about the people accessing in and out, concerned about the elderly traversing over to get to the handicap ramp, a number, number of different things, none, none of which I was trying to cause, but quite frankly, my goal was just to close it for a week, as I had kind of asked the planning board a number of times. I'd like to see if something was gonna be put in here. Let's do a real traffic study. Let's close our driveway and let's see how this actually operates. Let's see how it impacts the traffic. Let's see how the ingress egress works today. Granted, I know that they're talking about trying to expand it a little bit, but to me, it, it just doesn't seem like a starter. So anyway, I just wanted to address those and I, I do appreciate Mister Maroni's offer for us to use the driveway. I've been here a number of times, right? Um, I, I don't know if this is my twentieth meeting. I'm kind of the new guy in town. As I've said to everybody, I don't sit out there with a clicker to see, are going into the post office and which one aren't our clients? You know, we have been more than accommodating. And, you know, we, we've kind of been pushed over accommodation to really nuisance. We have cars that drive up and in and out of that driveway at high rates of speeds. We have the post office truck, we have the planet aid truck. We have a number of different vehicles in and out of there all the time. Cars that come in, they just block the driveway, they get out, walk into the post office with no access for our, for our clients to even come in or our employees, you know, or, or quite frankly, I, I was there on Saturday and I just popped in to pick up something at the office. I had my two twins, I parked in front of our door and I came out and there was a car that was stopped there at the post office going through a bunch of mail with another car parked adjacent, blocking off the entire, entire road, um, waiting for this person to go. This was on a Saturday. Um, so anyway, I mean, I've talked till I'm blue in the face on this, but, you know, just, just the insult to injury on some of this stuff. I was told, "You know what? You guys should close the driveway," and I did. And, uh, within a couple of days, my mother-in-law was served to go appear in court, served to summons for us to open up the blocked driveway by the owner. And I'm like, "Okay, so if this is gonna operate perfectly as is, tell me why they would try to take us to court to open the driveway and have an emergency injunction." That seems like we're, we're kind of counterintuitive here on what I'm being told and what their actions are. I'm sorry?
Who's the subpoena from?
The owner.
Who's the owner?
Mister Yan.
I would suggest that the board does not get involved in a civil matter between two property owners and we only address the project at-
I'm simply, I'm, I'm simply trying to address the fact that if this is gonna operate on its own, I don't understand why the merits of this shouldn't be discussed, and that's the only reason I'm not trying to-
Merits of the access are, are the issue on this entire thing. And if we've got an owner throwing subpoenas for access, that, we, we have an issue. That's the issue from the beginning.
Yeah.
Is the access and the parking. And, and for those that weren't here before, again, a reference that the DOT did too. That building was supposed to come down. There was never supposed to be anything in there and that was going to become the increased municipal parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
And that was the big plan for the whole bridge that we spent years on going through. And downtown parking has always been a problem. I've been here thirty years. It's still been a problem.
Mm-hmm.
Um, come, actually thirty-two now. And, um, it, it's never worked. And you're right about the Groveland Diner, that's always been a dance going, going through. So that, I think that's, whatever, what happened at the end, that get all squared away, is that exit back open?
No, it's ongoing and that's, that's what I said. I, I just wanted to let you know that it's just, it's counter, counter to what I'm being told by the applicant. And then, and then, of course, the applicant was actually with the owner at the court when we arrived, but it, it just is what it is. I, we, as I said, we've been more than accommodating. Since the bridge went in, all of those public spots went away.
Right.
Um, it's, you know, the, what was left there for ingress egress isn't optimal. Uh, but I don't think adding more pressure to the system is the right action, just as a town. So I, I'll leave it at that. I mean, as, as I've mentioned, I've, I've been here countless times.
State made it very clear in their letter that when that bridge went up, neither the post office nor the, the gas station was gonna be there. And that was gonna be completely gone, which is the way it was designed and built from the beginning.
Yeah.
So now we're after the fact and try, and the post office stayed open, that was a surprise. And now we're trying to reactivate the gas station to go through and parking is a problem and access is a problem. And we've been pointing that out since any of these applications came in. Was there a, a change in the access from the first set of the engineering plans? It has to now, yeah.
Uh, there's, I would say it's a tweak, small, you know, shifting the, um, handicap ramp to open it up a little bit.
Okay.
And slightly skewing how, you know, the angle of the driveway comes in.
Was there the petition to the, to mass DOT to, to pull that up and put a, put a light in there to allow access in and out? Why not? That was one of the findings when we, well, one of the things we discussed in the walk.
I put an application in for the DOT.
So they, they will, they will send out-
They're not gonna touch it.
They're not, the state's not gonna touch it?
No, they're not gonna touch it.
So from the board's perspective, then it's, it's still an access issue one way or another. And if the state's not gonna, not gonna help out by sliding that concrete up and putting a light there, 'cause that, they own it. And I understand the employees only parking and the, I, I get all that. But we still, we're still back to square one, but we got an access issue when our work goes in there.
Not really if they're gonna tweak it and Pete says it could work.
And that'll be just, everything will kick over to this side?
As far as-
You know, um, so he'll, he'll be all by himself and, and the access and everything's gonna go in that way? Okay. Alright. And then do you, Mass has gotta figure out what they're doing.
The DOT permit, so they can still make them do whatever they want.
Right, yeah, that's what I just saw in that. And, um, where are we with the downtown overlook on that committee to determine what the downtown is gonna look like for parking? 'Cause that, that has been a, a situation forever. Rebecca, do we, anything mentioned on that recently?
Um, so we received a fifteen thousand dollar, uh, grant to review the economic conditions of the downtown, not necessarily parking. We have done some initial, uh, data collection for parking counts. However, we do not have enough funds to proceed with that study and at a level that the town has required for parking. Therefore, we're seeking additional grant funding to have a consultant come in and do a high-level, uh, parking study and implementation plan to show exactly where the parking is located, the delineation, if there's adequate delineation, uh, whether there's additional parking, the distance between parking lots to the center of the square, um, whether or not shared parking could be implemented. So it's a really comprehensive approach that we need to take. So the initial data, um, it has, is just raw data. It does not really tell a story one way or the other. And the MDI report is about the economic and market conditions, not about the parking.
Okay, so what's the estimated completion date of that report to get the new funding?
It should be done within the next few weeks.
The whole thing?
Yes.
With the more funding?
Not the parking portion. We do not have money to do that, just the economic and market conditions analysis.
Okay, so, and then the traffic study, 'cause that was an issue, is that still happening?
The applicant did perform a traffic assessment that has been reviewed by TEC.
And that came out good?
Uh, I wouldn't say it came out good, but it came out to the point where I'm putting multiple, um, conditions to avoid dusting.
What was the actual count?
Count of conditions?
No.
Kind of, kind of cars going up and down, one thirteen.
Oh, I mean-
Ten thousand?
Oh, you know, on Main Street.
Yeah.
No, that wasn't part of the, uh-
Shouldn't that be part of it for the, the amount of the, the cars going up and down? 'Cause Merrimack Valley does it, Bob, they still do that down?
Yeah, they pick different streets, different years, but-
You could do a snapshot on-
About ten or eleven thousand on one thirteen.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, ten or eleven thousand. So that's, did that come into play with that study on the assessment?
Yep.
And access?
That's all considered.
It's all considered, okay.
I just want to say one more time, the access again, you know, the traffic study that was originally done, this was before the restaurant. I'm not sure if this was the boat showroom or the construction by appointment or what it was, but at the time, the traffic, the only traffic study that I'm aware of was done while people were using our driveway. And I had sent a note several months ago.
And it included in the package, did it?
Yeah.
The count?
Yeah.
The note has been included every time this has been addressed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what is the actual count? There's got to be a number. More than 100, less than 1,000?
I don't think it would be that much to go in there. I don't think it would be that much.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so either. I was just wondering what it was because it's, it's an aggravation thing more than anything else. That's why the light, if Mass DOT put a light in there, that would be easier.
If the impact was so little.
Yeah, compared to the flow, I get it, but it's still.
We don't want to add any traffic to the traffic.
No, just the, just the same thing that we saw when we walked it, trying to get out of there at a certain times, that's all. Yeah, other times, there's nobody there at all.
We're looking at an unimproved entranceway.
Yeah.
With the improved entranceway and a closed driveway at 293 Main Street, I think you're going to have an issue. I'll just leave it at that. I mean, I've.
We saw the issue and the fix was.
Well, when I.
Has to come through and.
When I closed it.
Open it up and put a light there.
When I closed it in December, it was just a complete mess. And that was, by the way, just so everyone knows, not my intent. That's what I was recommended by the applicant and by customers that were coming in. And most, again, if I go to the bylaws to why you're going to do a parking reduction on this, it's if there's a public benefit and there isn't a safety concern. Both of those were pretty clear that neither of those hurdles were met. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Was there input from the fire chief, the new fire chief on? Is it, okay. Onto that. And can you propose, because I don't work with Mass DOT obviously, other than when we get stuff in here, but can you propose that? I mean, that would be a clear fix is what we all walked that day is if they pulled that anchoring up and threw a light there. And that would clearly help. Is that something you have suggested to them or you just wait for them to tell you that?
What kind of a light?
Uh, just a regular weight light. Somebody's there to pull out, the light goes unless you pull out.
It would add a phase to the existing intersection.
Mass DOT is not going to touch it. It's too new, it's too new. You can ask, but it's going to take a.
Any decision, Mass DOT, obviously.
Well, it's due to Mass DOT approval regardless. They need Mass DOT approval regardless of what we say anyway.
And then who's going to take the, who's got the, if Mass DOT says, okay, go and.
Who's going to pay for it?
Not only pay for it, if there's an accident, who's liable for that?
Right.
Is it because it's on the state highway and DOT approved it that we have an access that we didn't have? And it's, it's not the restaurant, it's not the owner, it's not the past owner. That whole thing was talked about, I'm telling you, for years because that became a serious issue. And that's why the intent of that gas station was to be completely taken down and that was going to be the new municipal lot. And either way, access down to the Merrimack for a boat dock, which was going to be moved from the town ramp all the way over there. And the reason why was the access. And we didn't have any parking downtown and we've had study after study after study, I'm going to say for three decades on that that I know of, but maybe more, on the parking issue downtown. And that's why the relocation of the bridge to where it was 100 years ago off a school street made total sense to block that off, take that out. And then it became a, and then as each of the buildings down there, as they became available, were going to be shops, restaurants and everything like that. And it was going to be a pedestrian walkway. And the planning board put years of training it.
It didn't happen.
No, it did, it didn't happen, but.
If you made it a parking lot, you're still going to have the same egress and entrance.
No, we didn't. No, because that, the bridge wasn't going to be there.
But that was going to be a big entail to, you know, across this, in Havil, they'd have to do big land.
Actually, in Havil, they didn't have to, it was just a tweak on the angle that Havil point would stay. You're right, that was a concern. But what, the only point that I'm bringing up is the fact that we had a parking issue then and we have a parking issue still now, decades later. And it's, and I'm sure it was before, I don't know how it was with the old gas station that was actually on the other side way back when, 80 years ago downtown, but.
The spaghetti station at work, you can get in and out.
Right, right, right. I mean, that was a trick back then, but the bridge wasn't there. But I'm talking even before that, before the, going way back, but we've been discussing parking downtown and it doesn't matter who the applicants are, it's the same issue. It's landlocked into an area, the bridge made it worse. And the bridge was designed knowing or thinking that no one was ever going to use it again. So now we're redesigning the downtown and it's up to DOT with that, but we still have to deal with the problem of, in the town of the access. Now, does the town need a restaurant? Absolutely. Would it be nice to have a nice place to go? Sure. You know, we don't have anything in town anymore under that. That would be great. Is that a good use, the way that it is and the building is set up and the access right now? That's what we got to figure out. But the parking issue is not just because of this new applicant. It's, it's been there for decades. It's been an issue and every single board in this town has been discussing that for a long time. We don't have a solution yet. And maybe, you know, I was hoping Rebecca's oversight committee might have something looked, but they're not looking at parking.
They're not looking at parking.
Something like that.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, but we're not doing it yet without the grant. We're looking at parking for the use.
It's bicycle and walking.
Yeah, for the use. You know, but.
I think we should probably vote on it. Mr. Cornell's been in here, like he said, 20 to 40 times maybe and Pete's done his homework and the applicant's been here and maybe, you know, we could tag on a couple of conditions.
Are we still in public comment? Mitchell Croner, Three Cannon Hill Road Extension. I'm here as a civilian, not here as a real estate attorney, not representing Mr. Cornell. I was here a few months ago. I think at that point I said this had to be one of the worst ideas I've ever seen proposed for Groveland. And I've taken some long shots for clients over the years, I will admit. My recommendation is you voted down for this gentleman has to spend any more money. I know that would always upset me and my clients when you had a losing case, which this is. And you keep spending money on engineering. One thing, and following on what Walter said, as the owner knows, the prior owner received over $600,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, our money, because that building had no value. And the reason it wasn't taking the land was that perhaps whether it would be parking for the post office, which needs it, or parking for the downtown, that the building had no value. Why on earth someone would spend $250,000 fixing up a building for a restaurant that is reservation only with no parking when there's plenty of restaurants around? I don't know why someone would do that to their daughter, but apparently that's what we have here.
I don't think that was, I don't think that's very nice.
Well, listen, Bob, the, the. All right, well, the, the legal test is, what's the legal test? The legal test is that the reduction not be inconsistent with public health and safety or that the reduction promotes a public benefit. It's a danger. People crucified.
Okay, but you don't have to save $250,000.
Well, well.
You know, that's not going to be my decision.
All right, that's fine. Let's look at the park. All right, I, all right, I retract, all right, I take that back.
I don't think you're a good attorney anymore.
Well, that's all right. But I, that's all right, that's fine. I take that back. But I think you have to keep in mind public health and safety. That, those days when that was closed, it was a mess down there. That post office, I don't know, maybe the idea is we'll get a new post office. Maybe that's what'll come of it. I would, I would suggest rather than relying on what Mr. Maroni said would be to ask for letters from the post office. I cannot believe that the post office would be in favor of something like this that's going to hurt the parking and hurt the use of that post office unless they're going to move. As far as existing businesses, yes, you have a sub shop, you have a laundromat. I just saw something is going in where the mortgage company is. They have kind of first right, I would say, to that parking that's in front of them. I don't know which board, I mean, now you look back, the boat showroom would have been a great idea. I don't know who, which board, whether that was zoning board or which board turned that down. But this, this project just makes no sense and it's just, it's just not going to be safe. Someone's going to get badly hurt there. And I guess I'm here arguing for common sense and someone that uses the post office, I want to be able to use it and not have to worry about a restaurant. It's hard enough getting in and out of there now. I'll only go to that post office if I'm going over the bridge. I've seen people cut across two lanes of traffic. It just isn't a good site. I apologize for what I said, sir, but I just don't think it's a good place for your business.
Oops, sorry. James Bevel Aqua, 26 Coleman Road. I used to do site work on that property for many years and I know, I know it very well. Matter of fact, in this room, the only two people that have more experience in this town is Bobby and Bobby on the planning board. I think we all know what we're heading here. It's bad now, it's unsafe now. It's not going to become more safe. It's only going to become worse. So whether someone's a good attorney or a good planning board member, I don't know. But this is unsafe, period. And it's only going to get worse. Thank you very much.
Just for a quick rebuttal. Mr. Cornell's statement about the Groveland Diner. The Groveland Diner did well. My daughter and I can attest to the fact that we went there a lot of times after the bridge was built and it was successful. So the parking isn't the issue. The reason it didn't succeed for the last person was it just wasn't, the food was, went terrible after the couple that left the time before it. So as far as the closing of the, of his driveway, it was used on an unimproved entranceway, which is nothing compared to what it's going to be. You have an enter, enter, enter and an exit lane with signage. And the post office does like the plan. I've been told by the powers that be down in Havil and the one in Boston who called me today, it solves a big problem for them because they know there's an issue with Mr. Cornell and the driveway. And it said, and they said it would eliminate their issue that they're having right now. So it would, they are in favor of the, what we've proposed to the town. So, thank you.
Brad, do you have anything? Bobby, can I have anything to say?
What?
Do you have anything to say?
No, I'm, I'm in favor of the project right now with the stipulations.
Lisa?
No.
Anything to say?
With the permit from Mass DOT, with what Pete has given for his review.
Anybody want to make motions?
I do have a decision with some conditions based upon what we've been going through, back and forth with the review and the comments that have been stated thus far in the public hearing process, if the board would like to look at those and figure out whether or not there's any.
Sure.
Things that they would like to discuss further or any additional conditions and/or things that they would like to discuss.
So the DOT is about a year out for a decision?
At least.
At least a year? And then other boards are?
After this, you get a pool and you can see that the, the DOT is not a year out.
No, that wouldn't be a year out.
You sure won't?
No.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, one.
And what about CONCOM and ZBA?
I'm sure. I can.
Now, has ZBA given you any input yet? Have you applied there yet? Oh. CONCOM? Oh, you want here first and go there? Okay. And what's, is that over there? Has there been a traffic count, parking count of the public parking? How many spaces? So. If nobody's downtown and living at night, how many spaces? Say that again, 23 and what?
And it will be an improved site.
Okay. And then at?
And then she's the restaurant hours.
Five o'clock, how many are available?
We'll go along one by one.
Okay, so it. Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, that's necessary, you know, what if there's only two spots available at certain hours?
Then people don't come.
Well, I'm not disagreeing. It's just that, that's one of the, one of the things that'd be nice to know.
If there's no parking, you just keep driving.
That's a long walk to the market basket. Right, I just want to know, but it's, it's just one of the things I've taken into consideration. If you only have two spots available at peak times until, you know, if it leaves downtown, then what does that do to the, the operation? And where are people going to go? Where are people going to park? Are they going to try to park on a curb? Are they going to try to, you know, walk across the bridge? I mean, that's okay, but. It's something to at least know. In peak hours, there's only two spots, there's 20 spots.
Pete, did you see this? Did you see this? Do you want to take a look?
Do you want to take a look?
Excuse me, was the public hearing ever formally closed?
No.
No.
We're discussing right now, I'm sorry.
I, I, I'm just not sure what's, what's ahead of you. I just wanted to let you know that, you know, as I'd mentioned, I've been accommodating, and I've been accommodating, and I've been accommodating. I will definitely be closing off our driveway to Norwood only, closing and barricading the back of our property. So I just would like you to take that into account for the public interest that does use the post office that we've been accommodating. So I just think that's important.
One question. So you have in here, and I know it was one of the comments about if the, well, it's also one of the things, if the use exceeds what was used, that we have to reevaluate. Who follows up to see that?
So that, so I put that as a finding of fact under 15, that it's the traffic assessment we perform per the land use code 931. Any results in a higher intensity, you shall require advised traffic assessment. But then if you go down to the special conditions section, it states that, two things. Any expansion and or change in use shall require the applicant to appeal before the board to determine if the expansion or change in use requires an additional filing with the planning board. And then furthermore, specific to parking, is that under 32, after one year of occupancy, the applicant shall provide a parking study to be submitted to ensure adequate parking is available. That has to be done by a registered engineer. If more, if it's found in that study that more parking is needed, then the applicant shall be approved.
So I meant that, so it was just regardless, after a year, we're reevaluating no matter what?
Exactly. So we'll have a, we'll have a parking study, and then if we find that there's more concerns within that year, then we'll be able to ask the applicant to address them as needed, or he might need to do an additional traffic assessment based upon whether or not it's successful or not. Maybe they won't be, who knows? But we, I tried to put in protections for the town to make sure that if it does not function-
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like we had to drive by every day to see if this is-
Oh, no, no, no. And, and with me here in the office and the work that I do with the building commissioner, we can certainly check in on that and make sure that everything is-
That'll be my job.
Regardless of the outcome, I concur that you should be closing that off, because even if there's no restaurant there, you still have the issue with the post office, regardless of anything that exists there. So even if the post, even if this didn't get approved and you only had to deal with post office, you're still always going to always have to deal with the post office people. So he's, he's mitigating how many people could be coming in because of a restaurant, but the post office is still operating the way the post office is operating. And the patrons of the post office are still going to be pulling in and stopping regardless of if we approve this restaurant or not, unless you take your-
Okay, I, I would just like to answer that, that if you viewed any of the comments on Facebook from the town-
I'm not saying that-
-willified me. We're the ones that are bearing all of the burden and have been bearing all of the burden since the bridge went in.
I, I totally agree.
And I just want to let you know that that's, you're representing the town. The town, from what I saw, caused a lot of safety issues just with me closing my driveway with only the post office. Once that's closed and you put anything else in there, even if it is just the post office, you're going to have traffic concerns, you're going to have safety concerns, and you're, you're going to have a situation that may be untenable that you're going to have to answer for to the town. I just want to make sure that everyone's crystal clear on that.
No, but that's also what I'm getting at, is regardless of the restaurant, that problem exists today. So the post office is still operating the way the post office is, as is their patrons. And I did see those comments on Facebook, and that has nothing to do with you, and nothing on Facebook has anything to do with the people they're actually mad at almost ever. But it is a problem that will continue to exist regardless of the restaurant.
It will be exacerbated by?
Sure. But we could deny it right now, and you're still going to have that problem, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
We, we have been accommodating that problem today.
I know you have, and you've been accommodating above and beyond.
All of our goodwill and our accommodations for the post office, quite frankly, has been for naught. By your approval of instituting any other in, any sort of entity, whether it's a restaurant or whatever, just further burdens us. So we have been willing and we have been accommodating the post office. Our, our opposition to enter into a whole another commercial entity on the same site is what we're in opposition to. We're not in opposition to the post office. We haven't been in opposition to allowing the post office to using this, but obviously, we reserve the right at any time to close that off.
Absolutely.
What I'm saying is if you guys are going to add further burden, further safety concerns, further traffic issues to the town of Groveland, I just want to make sure that you're well aware of that, that that's going to have to exist on the ingress and egress that exists today that is not going to be improved markedly by the plan.
That's going to be minimal traffic, minimal.
Really?
We're not talking hardly anything.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, I, I tend to disagree with you, sir.
Well, you can, but-
Well, I, I do. I see it. I sit there every day and I look at it.
I've been in the business for 24 years.
Well, I, really? Have you been manned at 293 Main Street, watching it daily and in and out? No, you haven't.
There's going to be minimal traffic.
Okay. Well, I just hope you can live with the, you know, the consequences for the town, because that's what you're voting on.
From the liability standpoint, who picks this up? So if this gets approved and there's accidents out front, they're putting the bill, right? Not the town?
Your program.
No, why, why would-
No, I mean, I'm, I'm asking about that.
The state highway.
I've, I've just mentioned, we have a public, we have a public safety access from 113 due to the bridge, and we have a, that's been there forever. It's, they did not create this.
But we've been built for the accidents that happen now?
Yes. If we have an access, if we have an access coming through, okay, and they expand out and without a light from DOT, I mean, a light would, would clearly help the issue, but whether they're going to put it in or not, that's up to the, the state. It's their highway, it's their road. So if someone pulls out and peak time in, and we, and we have an issue and there's an accident because of increased traffic going through, even though it's minimal, it's still a pain in the ass to get out of there. And we all know that from the sidewalk. We've done, this is not a new concern. It's, it's been a very old concern, and we, there's plenty of documentation to know that the access is a problem. So my thing is, can we put into a decision that if there is any accident due to causing the accident, that goes to the owner? The town's off the hook, holding them less than harmless.
You'd have to consult with town council.
Well, that's what I mean. I don't know if we could do that or not. I'm asking a question.
No, I think that's-
But, but if, it's going to come back around. If there's an accident and someone gets hurt, they're going to say, "You, town, knew about this," and here's the tape.
No.
And it comes back in, and plays. And that's what I'm worried about.
How many accidents have we had coming out of that parking lot now?
I don't know.
And who's at fault?
But we're exasperating it now. I mean, we're making it worse. That's why I said a light would clearly help the issue and wouldn't have to be a problem.
We're out of line. I don't think we can go in there.
I don't think so, because, because we're studying the traffic count, and we're increasing the traffic as minimal as it is.
It's like saying if a 16-year-old kid who shouldn't have got his license, gets his license and creates an accident down there.
If you approve the 16-year-old kid to get the license, then yes. But in this case, we're improving the parking.
113, 113's built for 33,000 vehicle trips a day.
I don't discount that.
And it's only probably 10 or 11 right now.
But the access in and out is prior to a light, that, that if the car, if the light is red, you can't pull out. Well, yeah, because we're approving something to go in there that-
Well, in the driveway, who's liable if you get hit?
But we're approving-
That's a few reversals, no, it's more than 50%.
The town?
You can tell you that.
But, but if, if you're approving something that has now reactivated post-bridge construction, where it was designed with the bridge and through Mass DOT not to reactivate, okay, that's where, that's where I'm coming in on this.
But that's part of the DOT approval.
Correct.
If DOT says you can't do this, then you can't do this.
Right, and that's why it-
The decision clearly states if you go into, and I think that this really does kind of speak to everything that you're talking about right now.
Yeah.
Specifically, under 18, which is some of the neighborhoods that we even had, excuse me.
Mass DOT, I see, yeah.
17, that was even some of the lady who discussed it, the, with the engineer.
Right, right.
Is that the board has raised multiple concerns related to the driveway, including site distance, geometry, layout, and comparison to the site, which all have an impact on safe access and egress to the site. Mass DOT created this new driveway connection within the state roadway as part of that bridge construction. This configuration of the driveway constructed by DOT does not provide proper geometry to be used as a two-way driveway.
Correct.
In order to be used for two-way vehicle traffic, the applicant must make improvements in relation to Mass DOT, the, the permit and, and conditions set under Mass DOT. So the board has given itself the opinion that improvements need to be made in order for this to function.
No, I get, I, I see that, and I saw that, and we all saw that firsthand, and, you know, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to go out there and try to pull out of there at a certain time when the light's red and everybody's coming down 113 at 10,000 cars a day, because they stop there. It's not like they're trapped moving back and forth in this runway. So, but we know that going in. So a thought for this decision. There's other decisions that have to come forth. DOT is one of them, ZBA.
They've got their work in it.
What's that?
They've got their work in it.
No, no, I got that. I, I got that. What would be an option for the board to hold, you know, with, if this is the final, what you guys are looking at, hold until a little more input from Concom and that, and, and ZBA? So they don't spend any more money on engineering. And, and if, if conservation comes back and says, "We want something else," they're going to have to come back here anyway. Okay, and the same with ZBA. But what about a, a motion or a vote to allow them to continue the process to the other boards so that other boards could probably put some input? They may come in with the same, the same issue that we have.
It's the same thing as, as the vote is-
The vote is in, and they can come back to us.
And they still have to come back to us anyway.
Right, I got that. But-
Conservation isn't going to comment on anything that's going to change access or egress.
Not access or egress, but they will-
No, there is ZBA.
But, but they also will with the Wetlands Act and the Rivers Bill and all that stuff for conservation.
But that's not the access or egress.
That's not us.
Right, but I don't know, I don't know what they're going to say. I don't know anything there. But it wouldn't, it's not going to harm- I'm, I'm trying to get at more boards to take a look at this so that we can all be on the same page.
But they will. They still have to. They can't do anything until they get all the other approvals. The biggest thing is DOT. I would like to see what DOT says.
Does this plan still incorporate moving the handicap spot all the way to the other side of both the ingress and egress of the driveway? So an elderly person, many of which use the post office, will have to traverse 60 feet across both lanes of traffic to get to the ramp?
Do you have a page of that plan?
Well, actually, it does.
So it does. So, so an elderly person, many of which we see coming in at the post office and now-
That's the same plan?
We're basing it on a post office approval, and they've-
I'm, I'm, I'm not talking about the post office rule. I'm talking about the town of Groveland and their citizens, many of which are elderly using the post office.
Well, it's not uncommon to, to, when a patient-
I, I'm not asking what's common. You're taking a parking spot that's handicap only, and you're looping it 60 feet away and putting in two lines.
That's what I wanted to plan for, to click this.
Just curious, board, is, is that still the plan to move the handicap parking and many of the elderly?
Yeah, that was proposed, so that's still in the-
So that's still in the site plan you're approving?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
I think I move to close the meeting. The public hearing?
Yeah. Anybody, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Do I have a motion to vote on 301 Main Street?
So motion?
With-
You actually have to say what you're voting on?
With certain conditions?
Do you vote to approve the decision, the application and the decision as drafted?
As drafted.
So motion, second.
Lisa, as drafted?
I, Rebecca?
That's why. There was just one thing.
Was there only something there?
I just wanted to make sure it said it. There's this section that says, "All loading and unloading should occur during off-hours for the business. They should not extend into hours that may disrupt nearby residents." We also should, I know that there's the issue that the post office is still open at the same time.
So that's in the special conditions under 25 specifically, that states that they should be heard on non-operational hours, but not before 16:00 AM or after 11:00 AM in coordination with the post office.
Okay, that was the only thing. I didn't see actual hours.
Yeah.
I tried to do both as a finding of fact to make sure we hit all of the crucial points that were problematic and challenging, but then also put the enforcement through the actual conditions themselves.
Yep. As written.
Well, I don't think I could vote on this.
He's missed three meetings. Won't she miss two or more meetings?
When the letter comes in from DOT, who does it get addressed to?
They will, they will be required to be given to the department prior to them having occupancy moving forward. They will need to provide that, or the, the building commissioner will not allow them to occupy the building.
No, but like, will we see what DOT decides?
Yes, because if he does get approval, we'll need to see it, or else he won't get it.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it's coming through.
Come to us for sure.
Right.
And there still needs to go, and I, and, and through the zoning board of appeals, um, I can continue to update the board as that goes through the process.
Restaurant design.
Now, the ZBA is just the use?
Just the use and the use only.
Yep.
And they were the ones that stated they would not accept the application until it came first before planning.
Really?
Because of the original filing and the back and forth, and the use issues.
So it's a, it would be, as written, a conditional based upon approvals from DOT, which have to come in first. So really, this thing wouldn't go anywhere.
We're not going anywhere until the Mass DOT makes their decision.
I have Mass DOT, I have the zoning board of appeals, I have the conservation commission, I have the fire department. Any changes in potable water would need to go before the, the town water department. All of those must be, a copy of each and every approval must be provided prior to them occupying the building.
Do you have the post office?
How about prior to them going forward on the, on the date?
Yes, the post office as well. Sorry, that was the number one. I'm sorry.
It's, it's a, I think there's another word to put in there. It's, it's a conditional approval based upon all prior to approvals prior to-
Construction.
The act, before starting anything, any kind of comment.
We have that as a general, and under our general conditions, any action taken by the town board, commission, department, requires changes in the plan or design to buildings presented to, what may subject to modifications before the planning board, and then it goes on to the general condition that you cannot do anything without getting those approvals.
Right. And then any denial by any of the other boards? Right, and then any denial by any of the other boards or any conditions hereby negates this special permit approval?
Yes, the standard, the standard language that we have all along.
On all, all the elements, okay. The traffic study in there too?
Yes, they added it in the end as, um, part of this decision. So, just like in, in the traffic assessment memo dated December second, two thousand nineteen by Hail Engineering.
And the peak, what, what we just talked about, the, uh, how many spaces available during peak times? Right.
That's part of...
That's part of the...
That's part of the haze, I believe. That, I thought that was part of haze. The traffic assessment with the parking?
Yep, I saw that.
So, it's...
It's already included, doesn't it, yeah?
And then after one year, they have to reassess.
Right, so, so from the public parking, which they're gonna use the employees, I get, but the, uh, so the public parking, they're gonna use, there's an actual study in there by numbers.
Well, and then there's the twenty-five, I think, this one.
Uh, thirty?
Uh, maybe, sure.
Yeah, so thirty, Massachusetts registered, blah, 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 blah. Get more parking needed. That's the one year, though. I mean, right now. So, so between, from Monday through Friday, from, what time are you opening, four?
Three.
Three? Okay, so from three to ten, I know, I know after certain hours, it's gonna be, there's nobody downtown, it's a ghost town. Okay, but from, let's say, three to eight, how many actual spaces are available? That's what I was gonna ask.
That was part of the haze study, though.
Well, you said no. You said that actual number's not in there.
He presented that. I don't know if he was here or not.
No, but is it...
I just don't know what the numbers are.
No, it's part of the, the, the traffic assessment memo put together by Burge, Phil, Phil Bergeron with Hail Engineering. It identified the, um, traffic count, it identified the spaces. I know TC, if you look at the memo and back and forth about the distance between those parking spaces, but they had mentioned they thought twenty-four was some number it pointed.
No, uh, what Wally's saying is how many spaces were occupied at any given time.
Right, so in other words, at, at five o'clock, I pull in, do I have two spaces available for public parking? Or do I have ten? Or do I have none? That's what I wanna know. So, because if they're gonna have public parking, and I understand the, well, there's no place to park, whatever. But, how much are we burdening the public parking area, if at all? And are there, are there ten spaces open at five o'clock every single day? Or are there one space? Is there one space? Or is there twenty? I don't know. Because they're not using their, their own parking for, for patrons, it's gonna be the public lot, so. And so is everyone else that's out there. So, how many actual spaces do we have of public parking available between operation of their hours? And I would say reasonable would be between, I think, many people around.
I guess I'd have to take, pull the traffic assessment, because it says, "Note that the traffic assesses noted up to twenty-four spaces were unoccupied during the October two thousand nineteen field assessment." So, I thought they did count...
I'm talking every day, every day, every day between four and eight. So, that can be a condition to put in, just provide the number, just show somebody else.
But that's part of the one year after...
Not one year, not now. Before you start, do you have two spaces or do you have ten spaces open? Because it shifted, remember? We had, the original plan was that parking was gonna be on-site. Now, it's all public parking and only employees inside, so that was a change. So, we need to know, and this will help us with the downtown thing later, just somebody needs to go count how many parking spaces are open between four and eight. You know, downtown Groveland, okay, that these patrons are gonna be taken up. Are there spaces available? Yes or no? It's just, just a very simple thing. And, and I think by, you know, at four o'clock, there were ten, and six o'clock, there were none. We need to, we would like to know what that number is, because it's, because they're, they're planning on using all public parking, except for employees. And we don't know how many, we, we know we have twenty-four total, but...
I think that, that, I mean, based upon what they've done for their field assessment, but on an everyday standpoint, that's the obligation of the town, I would believe, if they wanted to assess their parking.
Not if they're using it. Because that's a waiver, because the parking should be on-site. So, they're asking for the waiver to only use that the six parking spaces en route for their employees, which I get, that's fine. But they were also planning on burdening the downtown parking, okay, or utilizing it. Do we have that many spaces available in that critical time block between four and eight? I don't know. And it's, should be part of the traffic study, should be very easy to figure out. But it's a number that needs to come up, and it's not on any of the studies. And that was a change.
That's your goal.
Yeah.
If the board is amenable to adding a condition of that nature, we can certainly add that condition.
Because we can use...
We have a motion on the table.
And that's one of the conditions.
No, no, there was no condition on the park, uh, how many spaces are... We had a motion, and somebody was, "No, we can add that."
Yeah, I have no problem. I have no problem adding that condition.
All right, that's fine.
Somebody go out and count the spaces between four and six. Is that what you said?
It's like four and eight, because that's, we know after there's a ton, and before that, it's not gonna matter, because they're not gonna be open.
So, as a special condition...
I mean, so it is five, what are you gonna do? Just write down five?
Yeah, that's it.
It's a baseline for the one-year study.
Yeah.
You mean, how long?
For the review. Yeah, for how long do you have to review how many parking spaces?
Just one week, Monday through Friday.
Yeah, that's it. That's all. And it's gonna help us in the downtown, anyway.
I'm just trying to think of the language, though, for, as a special condition...
I motion for Wally.
The applicant shall provide...
As he flies over, he...
Want me to count? Do a photo count?
The applicant shall provide, uh, parking...
Available parking.
Available public parking.
Uh, unoccupied parking.
So, municipal...
Yep. Public.
Public.
A week.
Within the, the twenty-three spaces that they say exist that they can utilize.
But the electric, I don't know how many spaces are in the electric building or in the water department.
That is not within the five hundred feet.
Yeah, market baskets across the bridge, there's a ton of parking over there.
Listen, they're gonna get their exercise.
As long as they don't fall off the bridge, we're on the back, that's all.
And that would be the state DOT will have to get an approval for that if they do.
They'll break the hook for that.
Provide life preservers.
Available spaces in public parking during the hours of operation between four and eight.
For one week's time.
And later in life, when we get to the town study, we will already have a DART on the board with how much public parking we actually have.
We do have raw data for the public parking for peak hours, but not every day of the week.
Yeah.
So...
We only want it during their hours of operation, because that's the only time they're gonna use it, so.
For one week.
Yeah, it'll average.
Is that weekdays or weekends as well?
Well, just, just when they're operating, that's all, between four and eight.
Isn't a traffic study, like, because a traffic study is what, like, a two-day thing with a thing, and they take the average of the actual, it's not like a every day, you count the number of cars that enter a site. You take the average based upon a certain amount, sort of go out every single...
What days of data do you have, do you know?
The one I, I, I think we have, um, we, we took peak hours on, like, uh, not Mondays and not Fridays, but a Saturday, a Tuesday, and a Thursday.
Isn't there a sheet on Massachusetts restaurants or, like, storage facilities? How many traffic, how much traffic is generated and how many cars go by? Isn't there something?
There is, but that, we're talking parking, that's the actual generation of trips. Due to people using the restaurant, not how many cars are available for, or how many spaces are available for the cars.
Who's gonna do this now that I...
I already, we already, we already, we voted Wally. If he wants to do it, he's gonna do it, so.
You think MVPC, we could get anything?
We'd have to use local tech, and I wouldn't advise that we do that for the benefit of an applicant.
Yeah.
Just, you have somebody that can just stand there with, and for...
To me, my, my opinion is that should be on the applicant, I mean, that crazy request to walk and walk, you know, five minutes around the block and get...
If the applicant's gonna do it to save some money, then the applicant's gonna have to take some pictures just to back up the data.
Exactly.
So, to establish the base that will be reevaluated within that one-year timeframe?
Yes.
Because that's the only way you're gonna really determine if more parking is needed.
And that's gonna help the town later. Oh, during, during, sometimes you can't get a space, but other times it's wide open. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but then tomorrow, it could be completely full. You don't know.
And this is winter. Summer's a little different, but...
So, that, that motion will need to be amended to add the amendment.
Add the amendment.
I, uh, motion to amend the decision as written to include the new condition.
We'll call it the Wally condition.
Second? Anybody second?
I second it.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
So, now, do I have a motion?
Motion what?
To vote.
To vote. On...
Motion to vote on the decision?
Decision.
Including, I would say, what?
We just voted on that.
That's what you just voted on.
We just voted on that, so, yeah.
On the amendments?
So, let's, the motion to amend the decision as written.
Ah, as written.
Me and Wally, uh, Bob, I can do it.
Okay.
And the memory and the decisions.
That's to be included.
To be included, that's what I was...
Okay. So, you're saying to amend the decision as written to approve the project at three oh one Main Street for site plan approval and, uh, special permit and parking reduction? Or just to approve, uh, approve the decision as written and amended?
That was my motion, was to approve, including the vote.
Got it.
Second it?
Probably seconded it. Seconded my motion before, so...
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, that just, that just amended the decision.
The decision, that's all.
And we have to adopt said decision.
It would be a motion to approve the decision as amended.
Yeah. A motion to approve the decision as amended.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When do you plan to go before Conservation and ZBA?
Are you going before one, before the other, or...
We already closed the public hearings, so we're all set.
I just wanna confirm, you guys have approved this, and you want me to close the driveway?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, that's, any complaints I get, just send them to the...
It's his property, he can do whatever he wants.
No, you don't have to close the driveway.
But it's his property.
His prerogative.
He can do whatever he wants.
Yeah, well, why do you say yes?
Why do I think he should?
No, no. Come on, guys, let's get a drink. We don't approve. We don't... Good old Fred, man, he's the best lawyer in town. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I think he should close it. I, I fully believe he should close it. It's a disaster.
Wait, no, I, I think Rebecca needs to, uh...
I'm sorry, I have to...
She, she has two quick, she has two quick...
You're done?
Is she retiring off the board? How many years?
Well, off and on twenty-four. I got on right after you.
Yeah, so...
All right, guys, let's, let's finish, let's, let's finish the meeting, and then we can get going.
Have a good night, Peter.
Rebecca has a couple, uh...
Thank you. Have a good night.
Um, sorry, I just have two, uh, quick items. One is just for...
Peter, thank you.
We'll see you, Peter.
Uh, a matter of, um, uh, just keeping you informed, is that Al Kuyard has purchased the Phyllis Way subdivision property. He is proceeding with the approved subdivision by the planning board, as well as the NOI that was approved by the Conservation Commission. He has submitted his Form F, his Form H, his construction schedule, and we did hold a pre-construction meeting where we did have the cemetery commission invited, and they did, in fact, attend. There will be some slight revisions to the emergency access that originally is not there now, that is part of the plan, based upon what the cemetery commission would like to see. And also, the highway superintendent, once we get those proposed, um, types of changes, we'll obviously bring them before the board. They're obviously insubstantial, if they're not really necessarily changing, it's more of an angle.
What was the final thing with the, with the whole deed there, and who was getting the land and the fencing, and, you know? How did that ever shake out?
So, the, the two open space parks, those are supposed to be deeded back to the town.
Okay.
Um, and then there's the two access points. There's the one in the back, which is a gated access for the water department to access through well and back. And then there's the cemetery access for some of their larger, I guess, deliveries. I don't know what the, that conversation was, but there's that one as well. There's the no-cut buffer, there's the screening, um, there's...
Fencing.
Exactly, there is going to be, uh, screening and buffering from the cemetery. Al has graciously, obviously, very cunning, and, and, and I think that it's kind of a no-brainer that he is not going to be performing any work, obviously, during any ceremonies. The cemetery commission is going to communicate with him so that they can coordinate schedules. The only outstanding item that I have is the SWIP. I haven't received the SWIP yet. I know he's working with Moran and Cameron, they're gonna be doing the monitoring. The way that the decision was structured said that they would have a third party do their monitoring. Some of our more recent ones say that we use a peer review. It actually saves them more money to use somebody who's actually reviewed their project, or the, the, the project, but he would like to use Moran Cameron, they're also preparing the SWIP. I did get the O and M plan from Bill Holt. All the other documents seem to be in line. He does not obviously wanna set his bond until he gets further down the road, something similar to what he did with that one, but the lots are in covenant, so we are protected in that regard, and until...
Did the lots change? Remember that one lot that they were talking about on the, it was a very large lot?
I think it's the...
No, no lot changes.
I don't remember the conversation, but I, I, I do, the, the plan hasn't changed from what was designed.
Yeah, the one, so they could, they were gonna twist it or pull it back to get the buffer zone, to, something with the cemetery they were talking about.
So, the indoors plan that has your signatures on it is the one that he's moving forward with. And any changes will obviously come before the board. Once, um, he does give me the SWIP, he's going to be, um, doing some tree clearing, but no other work. The erosion control's out there, I walked the erosion line. I met with some of the neighbors that had some concerns. I'm in direct communication with them for all updates, allowing them to know when their work is gonna be taking place through the, you know, communications with Al and, Al and whatnot. So, um, it seems to be moving forward, but I did wanna let you all know, since I know that one was kinda at a standstill.
For a long time. Did, did it expire? How many years ago did we do that?
It did not expire. It, I think it had an, uh, almost a year, just about. It was just, I think, under a year left.
Okay.
I, I thought it...
For the three-year marker?
Two thousand, I wanna say sixteen, three years, so...
Yeah, it is three years.
I forget the exact thing. He was close, but he was still not expired. Because then we went with Conservation, because then Conservation didn't file an NOI. So, the planning board had provenly approved the subdivision, and they never filed a Conservation at all. And then they had to file a Conservation after the fact. And then I also know that there was an appeal, uh, by, um, DP to Conservation, and then they had to revise and do an alternate plan, so, but I do remember looking at the dates, and they did correlate.
So, we, we have a three-year, a three-year rule if you don't start the construction, that you have to come back in and get an extension from the board. Is that where that is?
I, I wanna say it was, I'll pull it up right now.
Probably coming up if it's not.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It's coming up fast.
No, I know it's close, but I, I'm, I'm like, very positive.
They already started the construction.
So, need, if he, if he started, do you still need a next extension?
Because we don't have a end date, right?
Didn't she say they had not started construction?
They did, they did, they did the tie-ins from the road.
Oh, okay.
And everything else, the water, the sewers tied in.
When did that happen?
The steel fences out, the stormwater, you know?
Which was...
Whatever, a couple months ago.
Yes.
Did that because of one thirteen.
Because of one thirteen paving, they had to get it done.
What's the date of approval?
Is... Two thousand... Eighteen.
Two eighteen was our signature?
Yep, one twenty-three, two thousand eighteen, so they're just the marker. I knew it was like, very, 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 very close.
Yeah.
But, yes, so they've done most of everything, they're just doing site clearing. Once they start to do more substantial construction, I'll have to meet the conditions of the decision, and I'll keep the board updated. So, they're gonna vote that.
Yeah, there's still, um, it's, it's just a formality, but I believe it's the start and, and the completion of, of the three decision, and of the subdivision in three years, or he's gotta come in and ask for an extension, so it, that is a, it's a formality, he just sends in a letter, says of going past three years, and we say, okay, but it just gives us a new timeline on the subdivision.
So he has to finish by next February, or get an extension?
Or, 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 and usually they'll, yeah, he'll just come in and say, we're gonna go two more years, and okay, that's all.
Was he in the subdivision regulations?
Yeah, that's, that would, it's, it's just because the subdivision, remember, that's what happened with Darks, because it went right to the wire on seven years.
Well, they didn't start.
Right, so it's a formality, we put it in there because what was happening.
They didn't even have survey done. They didn't even file the plan.
Right, that's a mess, but, we've had subdivisions, and one of them was, um, Stonebridge, that it went through the cycle, and if you were going past from start, from the sign date to three-year date, and then extended, you just had to come in and inform the board, that's all.
I'll read back on that one.
Yeah, it's, it's just a formality, it, it just, uh, they just come in and let the board know, here's the new timetable, we started because it took so long to do this stuff, and we're gonna start here, and we're gonna blow by three years, but we're gonna be done in two years, or, and that's if they need it, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah, we always grant that, it's, it's just that it keeps them, it's more for letting the board know what's going on.
Right.
And if they're coming in for mods, that, that'll take care of it too.
What else do you?
Prior to the expiration of the three-year approval period, the developer will show a question writing to the planning board and instruction, and an expansion of time, so prior to the expiration of the three-year approval.
Right, there you go.
Yeah, so he can come in between now and next February, and it's.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and so then the other item, um, that I have to quickly, quickly go over, is that, um, it's time to submit the department budget, so I have, um, drafted for you what I have submitted to, um, the finance committee, that we will be discussing at the upcoming, upcoming meeting. Um, so, uh, if you take a look at the spreadsheet in front of you, um, fiscal year twenty was level funded from fiscal year nineteen, except for a slight increase for the cost of living increase for the salary, uh, which was just two percent. What you'll see in front of you is that there is, um, three changes. One is that there's a thousand dollar increase in the expenditure light item, and what I also did is I took the liberty of breaking down the expenditure light item, which you'll see in the description page, so you'll see that I have education and training, consulting services, supplies, software, and legal notices, so that we can get a general sense of exactly how we're moving forward and how we're spending, um, our, our monies. Specifically, one of the line items is the software line item, and that one is, um, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, that is actually the maintenance fee that the department will be carrying forward for E code, um, to house the zoning bylaw, the subdivision rules and regulations, um, and the land disturbance permit. It's also gonna be housing the, um, wetlands protection, uh, excuse me, the wetlands bylaw, the local one, and it can actually be used to, as a platform to host any other regulation, so if the town wanted to move forward and do the general bylaw, and that fee would stay the same, so it'd still be the nine ninety-five, so it's kind of, the department's holding it, but essentially it has more benefits than just our department. So because of that, I didn't wanna take away from the department, so I just increased the line item to a thousand, and to essentially bring back what we were pulling towards that, that fee. Then the other change is the assessment of the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, it actually went down from last year, so last year we paid two thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirteen cents, but we requested more, we requested two thousand five hundred and sixty-three. So the further regulations of the commission, they are not allowed to increase their assessment beyond two point five percent, so taking the number that we budgeted black, or excuse me, that we paid last year, adding the two point five percent, it will not exceed two thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and zero one cents.
Is that just for our board, or is that multi-board?
That's the assessment for the community as a whole, to be able to use any of their local technical assistance.
Did we include in the budget, in case you have to ask them for, for other things, like traffic studies, um, you know, mapping, et cetera?
That's what the assessment's actually for, so, they receive monies from the state that's called, uh, direct local technical assistance, D L T A funds.
Right, right, but we've gone over that before, and they've, and we've had to do it for certain, certain things, but.
Usually that was what we would have to pay for, and that's why I tried to break it out into consulting services, so that if we go for a grant, right, we wanna go for a parking grant, and I wanna do a conceptual study to make our application a little bit more appealing than our neighbors, then I could say, hey, T C, for two grand, do you think that you could help me put together this conceptual plan that shows A, B, and C, to show that we have more of an edge, or, you know, interest or investment into this particular initiative? Then we could use the consulting services to do that, and then we could use that for, for M V P C, too, because they would obviously cost, um, less than what you're gonna get for a professional firm.
Right, we've, we've used it over the decades, matter of fact, Bobby and the planning board and, and the road, road commission did it when we were extending our pipes, sewers, drains, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so I'm asking, is, is there a budget in there for ten hours?
Oh, no, well, they, they don't typically go by the hours, like, that, with each of us.
You go by the project?
So even, all of us are, are guaranteed a certain amount of hours, that includes G I S, that includes traffic, so, but each one has a certain amount of hours designated to a certain task, and it's based upon the assessment value of the community, so that's done by the M V P C, we don't set that, they set that.
Oh, I got that, so, so what's in the budget for flexibility here for consulting services, et cetera?
Four thousand eight hundred and five dollars.
Okay, so that's beyond the Merrimack Valley.
That's beyond that.
Okay, do you think that'll cover the things that we're trying to do with the downtown study and, and everything like that?
Um, I think so, I, I, I've been trying to utilize my own expertise and, and then also couple them, um, with some other, either through engineering services or through the M V P C, to kinda combine that and, and lessen the cost of a project, so, I feel as though we can accomplish a lot with, with a little, if we're just creative about how we do that, I mean, for example, we have like, the highway department, I'm working with the highway department to do a roadway pavement management system, because we have complete street fundings, so if we apply to complete street fundings, we need to have engineering, engineering's not paid for, so going through the process of, you know, using consulting services from the M V P C, then using some consulting services, maybe from an engineer, and another engineer, coupling it with his budget, and kind of like.
That's what we did, that's what we've done for decades, so, so that's, that's all good planning, I'm all for saving the taxpayers money, in, in the town of Groveland, I was just, so yeah, the, M V P C does a wonderful thing.
If you get, um, you get a good, uh, for your money's worth for the M V P C.
Very much so.
Always, yeah.
Of wider ways.
Yeah, it's a great.
So she can call if she needs some mapping done.
A great bonus for the town, well, we've used them for years, so, so, no, no questions.
So not much has changed in that regard, it's just about supplementing that where we can, and then the, um, last item is the, um, uh, is that I have increased, um, my salary, uh, based upon, um, my base salary, so my salary is actually comprised of two separate funding sources, one is from the planning board, and then I supplement that with C P C funding, and usually the way that that goes is that I'll have to advocate for certain projects, like I just advocated, or when I first started it, was the open facing recreation plan, so in addition to my responsibilities as a town planner, in addition to what I provide to the planning board, and in addition to the other initiatives such as grant funding and all that other stuff, I take on additional projects to cover, um, uh, twenty thousand dollars of that salary with C P C funds, so it doesn't have to come out of the planning board and or general fund. And so therefore, based on that, the budget for F Y twenty was only for forty-six thousand three hundred dollars for my salary in total. Based upon my contract with the Board of Selectment in the town, my base salary is sixty-five thousand dollars, and I've asked for five percent on the base salary, which will result in a seven percent increase on that line item of, for the planning board, for a total of forty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for the town planner's salary.
And the three hundred dollar a year stipend for planning board members is going up, what? It's been that way for seventeen years.
If that's something that the planning board would like to add, I can certainly put that in there.
What's it going right, anyway, I don't even know.
I believe that it was, I think it's eight hundred, no, three hundred, three hundred feet.
It's been three hundred for twenty-seven years.
I can have my, my wrong.
I donate mine to the library anyway, so, uh.
I believe it's eighteen, eighteen hundred is the, has been the flat rate for the last two, two to three years.
Just choke it on it.
Okay.
And so there's no, there's no other changes to the budget, so it's gone down a little, it's gone up a little, um, and so I'd like to ask if the board would.
Motion to approve the budget.
Yeah, she does a good job.
I just have a question, Rebecca, you have enough in here for minutes, for doing minutes?
I do the minutes now.
You do the minutes.
I try to take the monies and use it for consulting services and grants, instead of having to pay somebody.
Good, well, I, they made a motion, and I second.
I did the motion and seconded.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the last thing is that, um, because three oh one has been voted this evening, we do not have anything on our, um, projects that have been filed and or are, I mean, I know there's things that are gonna be coming in the pipeline, but nothing has been done, other than invoices admitted, obviously, if the board would like to, we can probably push our next meeting off to February, which would be February fourth.
So motions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion adjourned.
Second.
At eight.
Thirty-eight.
Should be both of them? All favor?
All favor?
Aye.
I'll finish out my term in my.
Thanks for watching. And happy new year, all right.